Okay, welcome everyone tonight to the August 9th Committee of the Whole Meeting. I call it order. Roll call please.
Mr. Zawada.
Here.
Mrs. Scott.
Here.
Ms. Dieroff.
Here.
Mr. Hemingway.
Here.
Mrs. Hogan.
Present.
Ms. Nyman.
Here.
Mr. Panarello.
Here.
Mr. Updegrove.
Here.
Mr. Brophy.
Here.
All present.
Can we all stand for the Pledge Allegiance in a moment of silence? Okay, we did have an executive session that lasted 30 minutes and it was in regards to personnel. Let's go and move us to our public comment period number one. I believe we have some signups. Okay, we do have some signed up and I'm going to read this statement, bear with me, I forgot my glasses. "On behalf of the Board of School Directors, I would like to welcome you to this meeting. We welcome your attendance and input from stakeholders to assist us when making recommendations and decisions related to the Boyer Town Area School District. The procedures and rules for public participation are detailed in BASD Board Policy 006. This document is available at the meeting and on the BASD website. Participants properly registered on the signup sheet will be recognized by the presiding officer. Public period number one is limited to topics on tonight's agenda. Participants must preface their comments by the announcement of their name, address, and group affiliation if that's appropriate. All statements, inquiries, or comments shall be directed to the presiding officer. No participant may question, no participant may address or question board members individually, administrative team members individually, school employees, or members of the public individually. Note that we value and will not compromise the privacy of our students and staff. Please see us outside the realm of a public meeting if you have a concern about an individual staff member or student. If your public comment includes a question, Ms. Torsia or a member of her staff will be in contact with you to confirm your question and provide you with information. Comments are limited to three minutes and comment periods are limited to 30 minutes. Individuals may indicate a desire to speak a second time if there is time left in the 30-minute period. Finally, note that we do record our board meetings and committee meetings and we post them on YouTube with a link on our website. We request that if you do wish to take pictures or record the meeting yourself, you do so in a non-disruptive and discreet manner and use those materials respectfully and responsibly." Okay, our first speaker would be Mr. Amy. His topic is Policy 006 and 903. Thank you, John.
John, Amy, new handover township. Once again, I want to voice my opposition to what the policy 006 and 903, as it's currently being written, is going to be voted on again tonight. Case in point, I see there's a lot of people here tonight, seem to be excited about something. I can't wait to hear what they're excited about, but they might be surprised to learn if they haven't been paying attention that this will probably be the last meeting where they can use the signup sheet. They're going to be required to register ahead of time in the future and I feel like that's very limiting and it's being added to the policy simply to address a risk because they're no longer allowed to ask at meetings whether you live in the district and I don't think a lot of people are going to come here to our district just to speak. So I think it's a needlessly limiting policy, a needlessly limiting addition to the policy that's going to stifle public, um, uh, public participation in these meetings and I think we can all see by being here that the public want to participate. Secondly, I see that once again it's been added to the consent agenda and I see that several other items have been added to the consent agenda that, especially the treasurer's report, that have never, to my knowledge, ever been on the consent agenda before. The consent agenda, according to the, according to what you got in the, uh, in the, in the agenda itself says, "Most of the items listed under the consent agenda have gone through board subcommittee review and recommendation. Documentation concerning these items has been provided to all board members in the public in advance to assure an extensive and thorough review. Items may be removed at the, from the consent agenda at the request of any board member." Well, still the policy, I know there's at least two or three board members that are still not happy with the policy, so that's not an item that I would call routine. And the other, the treasurer's report's never been on there, so I'm not sure why you suddenly added that to consent agenda. And the other items, I just found out about them when you published the agenda yesterday, so I don't understand how you're saying that they've undergone thorough review, especially since we don't really have subcommittee meetings anymore. So I'm really concerned about what we're lumping in there. And once again, I think you're going to force a couple of board members tonight to vote no to the consent agenda, which means no to all the issues because you can't line item veto them. I really, really am concerned that some of the items are getting lumped there so we can avoid discussion on them and I really hope you guys reconsider. And I hope there's five board members that would reconsider that if there are some motions to get some items off the consent agenda at night, that you'll understand that in the ease, in the name of transparency and the name of participation and input, you remove some of those contentious items from the consent agenda. Thank you.
Mr. Hemingway, just one response. With regards to the treasurer's report, that item was on the June meeting. It was presented and discussed and there was, um, a vote was not taken that evening. It was an oversight, so that's why the treasurer's report is on the consent agenda.
Kevin Patton.
Comments on use of school facilities?
Sorry, my name is Kevin Patton. I reside in Culbordale. I'm here as a parent and also as a board member for the Boyertown Legionette Twirlers. I come before the school board today to express my feeling in regard to the proposed modifications for the use of school facilities. Directly speaking, I am referencing the reclassification of nonprofit community groups and the financial impact that this will have on these organizations and the Boyertown School District students that attend them. I previously spoke regarding this topic back in September 24th of 2013 and since then, my viewpoint and stance has not changed. My wife is a director of the Boyertown Legionette Twirling Organization and I sit on the board of this organization as well. And an organization that has a zero-turn-away policy and offers both partial and full scholarships. To put it simply, any child that would like to be a part of the organization can be. Our organization has utilized the use of Boyertown School District property since 1970, which was a result of an agreement between the Boyertown American Legion and the School District. This nonprofit organization has been a staple in the Boyertown community for 52 years and my concern is that with the proposed use of school facility changes, that organizations such as ours will find it impossible to offer an affordable activity for our children to attend. As so many families in the school district are facing rising prices for such things as groceries, gas, school taxes, and everything else, when is enough enough? Our organization is composed of mostly Boyertown children and their families that live within the school district. Therefore, we all pay our school taxes, which go to maintaining the various facilities that we are discussing this evening. At what point do we forget that organizations such as the one that I'm supporting tonight are in place to support our children? They are there to give these kids something constructive to do and give them the chance to be a part of a group, learn self-esteem, self-respect, and teamwork. I feel as if some of the school board members have lost touch with our responsibility for our children. In reality, as time goes by, there are less and less constructive, safe, positive, and engaging things for our children to do each day. Without organizations such as these, these children possibly would be involved in nothing other than watching TV and socially isolating themselves because their families cannot afford to pay for the activities because the costs have become so high. On a personal note, as a parent of six children, I know the difficulty in not being able to support my children in every activity that they would like to do because of the financial impact. I could say as a parent, it's the worst feeling that you'll ever have. As a school board, you have the opportunity to not charge for the use of public property in buildings that are paid for and maintained through taxpayers' money. If, if any single board member can honestly sit here tonight and tell me that the district is in such bad, such bad financial shape that we need to charge nonprofit organizations fees to cover the district's expenses, then we have a much bigger problem here. While the proposed fees might seem nominal, you need to calculate them over the cost of a school year, which will cost-
30 seconds, please.
-for our organization, just under $5,500 hours, for the organization to use the school. As a result of this cost, our organization would have to double the requested donation amount per child per season, i.e. the board to seriously consider the negative consequences that these proposed modifications for the school facilities would have on the families that utilize them. Thank you.
Okay, next, Jessica Hartenstein. Again, on facilities.
Hello, my name is Jessica Hartenstein, reside in the Boyertown borough. I'm speaking on behalf of the Boyertown Elementary PTO, other PTOs I'm sure as well, and the Boyertown Legionettes as well. My first address would be like to the PTO. So I understand that currently, we have not been charged for any facility usage in the past three years since I've been on the board. My fear is now that as we continue this school year, we will be charged for these facilities. I apologize, but we raised funds for the school. 100% of our proceeds go back to the school. So for us to have to raise money for school slides last year, for anything else we need, we did the luncheon for the teachers, was that 2021 we did that? Um, that was $10,000 we raised for that because it hadn't been touched since it opened in 1969. So my fear is that we're going to be having to charge for weekend events if we want to do something for the kids, which we do do, and after-hour items, as far as classrooms, the LGI, which we do things in, the cafeteria, the parking lot, anything like that. So I just want to make sure that this is something that doesn't continue or doesn't happen because it will feed into our profits that we have raised very hardworking for the past, how many years we've been there, which is a lot. So that's my concern. I really don't want to be taking money out of the school that we have for fees like that. It should not be happening at all for these kids to get to do something with their families and with their staff and things like that. Boyertown Legionettes, I'll talk about that next. Um, I'm also part of that. My kids love it. Um, it's something that I, as a person who can't afford to do softball and cheerleading and all that stuff, but they can do that because it, the fees are minimal for me to be able to do that. I'm not part of the scholarship funds, but I will tell you that there are many students who are. It's a safe place for them. They have socialization, they're able to learn, um, hand-eye coordination, they enjoy it, it's fun for them. And it's something that they can do to get out of the house instead of being on the iPads and the TVs and all that stuff and it's just great to have the social. My daughter and I already had a conversation about the fact that if these fees come through, that we may not be able to do this anymore. And she actually has been excited to do the competition team possibly this year and expand on her talents and to become more involved in this. And she has no desire to be involved in anything else but this. So my question is to you, can you please make it something that my family and other families can afford as well as for the PTO? Thank you.
Barbara Hunter. Okay, again, discussion on facilities.
Hi, my name is Barbara Hunter and I'm speaking to you about the proposed fee changes for the usage of Boyertown facilities. For years, nonprofit organizations and youth organizations have been able to use district facilities free of charge during non-weekend hours. The proposed fees will dramatically increase the cost of youth supports for Boyertown families, making extracurriculars further out of reach for even more families, including those of at-risk children. $15 an hour does not seem like much to rent a space. When you realize there's an additional $20 fee per hour to utilize age back, suddenly the true cost is $35 per hour for gym space. Imagine the additional cost for registration fees for, say, Optimus Basketball for three hours of gym space, five nights a week, or over $6,000 for the season passed on to athletes. Same for wrestling, cheerleading, and for our twirling organization, Boyertown Legionette Twirlers, who for 52 years have used Boyertown facilities free of charge to provide an invaluable sports experience to Boyertown youth. Our organization is a registered nonprofit youth organization sponsored by the American Legion Post 471. We serve Boyertown youth between four and 21. We have a policy of turning away no child regardless of finances, so every year we have twirlers on full or partial scholarships. As inflation has climbed, we have seen an increase in funding families needing aid, but we never turn away a child who's interested in the sport of twirling. Our registration fees for our performance team are low, under $60 per season. We fundraise heartily to offset these costs, but that only goes so far. At $35 an hour rental rates to use the gymnasium, our organization will be billed approximately $5,500 to use the gymnasium at Middle School West for two nights each week for the school year. This adds a cost per participant of nearly $75 per person for our performance team and nearly $500 per person for our competition team. Simply put, this will not be sustainable to our families and our organization. I was asked to read a letter from a twirling parent who could not be here tonight. I had the privilege of coaching her daughter and she gives testimony to the personal importance of this organization. My name is Danette Felix Scott. My daughter Lavinia twirls for Boyertown Legionettes. She has not had the easiest five years. She had been residing with her father and stepmother until February of this year. For five years, my daughter was physically and mentally abused and when she came home to live with me full-time, she was broken, scared of her own shadow, and had constant anxiety attacks. Twirl was the first thing she got excited about, so with the financial help of family, I signed her up. It was an almost instant transformation in her behavior. Lavinia was making friends, laughing, smiling, and enjoying life again. With support and kindness she received through Boyertown Legionettes, Lavinia has improved by miles. She practiced at home every day and went to every practice at the school, and worked harder than any 13-year-old I know, and after only half a season, she has been invited to try out for the competition team. Boyertown Legionettes is not just something to do on a Wednesday or Thursday night. For 50 years, Legionettes has been a staple to this community and has been a family. I'm asking you on behalf of Lavinia to please take careful consideration of voting against the Boyertown Legionettes' ability to use the middle school for a few hours to practice. I'm asking you to think about that, what they would take away from everyone. Thank you for taking time to listen to your story and time to weigh this decision. In conclusion, I ask you to reconsider the fee structure for the rental facilities or to revisit the application of these fees to nonprofit organizations that benefit the youth in our community. Please do not balance the budget and recoup funds in the backs of our children who so desperately need these organizations. Thank you.
Okay, thank you everyone for your comments. Okay, it's going to bring us to, I'm looking for a motion to approve the June 28th of School Board Directors' Meeting Minutes.
Motion.
Carol Cruz.
I have a motion from Mr. Updegrove, I heard a second from Mr. Brophy. Any discussion? Okay, two of them. Oh, okay, hold on, sorry, Ms. Scott.
The, the only thing that I find that I, I think it's missing from the, the minutes are the board comments at the end. Are we not putting those on anymore? I didn't see them. Maybe we didn't have any, but I thought that we did.
Ms. Torsia.
I don't have an answer for that question, Mrs. Scott. I apologize, as one of the other administrative assistants does do the minutes for the board meetings, so I will reach out and get an answer for everyone with respect to that.
Okay, so that's not just randomly taken off? That should be on there?
No, not at all.
Thank you.
Okay, with that said, could we take a vote?
Mr. Zawada.
Yes.
Mrs. Scott.
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff.
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway.
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan.
Yes.
Ms. Nyman.
Yes.
Mr. Panarello.
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove.
Yes.
Mr. Brophy.
Yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, Ms. Torsia, I'm going to send this your way for some discussion items.
Thank you, Mr. Hemingway, and I'm going to make this announcement twice so that people hear it. Our next committee, the whole meeting, will be held on September 13th and that meeting will be held at Gilbertsville Elementary School. Um, I have shared with all of you on the board that we are going to start, you know, going back into the buildings again on this year. We decided to hold six meetings that would be in buildings featuring our elementary schools. We get to hear a lot about our secondary students, we get to recognize them and celebrate them often at our board meetings, which we will continue to do, but we don't always get to see what's going on at the elementary level or hear from, you know, those principals and students. So just a reminder, mark your calendar, don't come here on September 13th. I'll remind you again and just if the public is, you know, listening and hear that that's where our next committee, the whole meeting, will be. However, our second meeting this month will still be here, so please, you know, come here. So moving forward. So thank you, Mr. Hemingway. And the first item that I have for discussion that I would like to bring to the attention of the school board is the six-month review of our health and safety plan. And we have gotten, we have got, not gotten, I don't know, Mr. Sauer, you allowing me to project? There has not been a lot of discussion from the Department of Education or the Department of Health with respects to, um, opening up the school year, um, with regards to COVID. So really, the only direction that we've been given is that we would need to continue to report positive cases, um, weekly to the Department of Health as positive cases are brought to the school district's attention. So if we don't hear of a positive case, we won't have anything to report. So I just wanted to go over the health and safety plan and show things that we have eliminated. There was some language in the very first page with regards to the ARP requirements and 90% of the ARP ESER funds being distributed. That, that information is obsolete and so therefore I removed it. I'm saying I, but this was looked at by all of our administrators and reviewed as well with our school nursing supervisor. We looked and made changes to the health and safety plan back in February, the new date would be August. Within this part of the document, um, use of face coverings is optional, change that. We also have been told that, you know, physical distancing is not something that's going to be emphasized, so we are going to just ask people to maintain personal space, be cognizant, you know, whether we're at the end of a pandemic or flu season or cold season, it's always as good to be mindful of your personal space, especially if you have any kind of symptoms, sneezing, coughing, et cetera. The paragraph number two, how will the LEA ensure continuity of services? I, um, there, we're responding and saying, "Boyertown Area School District will be opening and operating school to full in-person instruction," period. And that all resources will be available to address students' academic and other needs as they relate to student health and food service. So we're putting everything back into place. We are operating prior to the ways that we opened up school prior to August 2020. Under the first column where, you know, they ask how universal and correct wearing a mask is, um, we are stating point-blank that masks are optional. It's your choice to wear a mask or not to wear a mask, it's, you know, completely optional. Some people are choosing to wear them and, and that's fine. We have removed any of the provisions with regard to number of case counts within a classroom or in a building. We're not looking to move virtual, um, we're not looking to close anything down unless, you know, we would be directed otherwise and would have to comply based upon, you know, data that we would report to Department of Health. We are also stating that, um, I'm getting ahead of myself, I'm sorry, modifying our physical and modifying facilities or physical distancing, again, we're going to adhere to the latest mandates and relative to physical distancing, again, we're just reiterating to, you know, be mindful of your personal space. We did leave in that the use of desk shields will be available upon request. A parent would have to make that request if they feel as though they want their child to sit at their desk and have a shield around them, um, we can, you know, provide that. We have plenty. Handwashing and respiratory etiquette, that's pretty self-explanatory, that's something we should be practicing on a regular basis year-round. We did not make any changes there because it's, you know, just complies with good etiquette, you know, as it pertains to being, you know, safe and, and healthy. Cleaning and maintaining healthy facilities, again, want to keep our facilities clean, we want to continue to have good proper airflow, um, so we didn't make any changes there as well. There wouldn't be a need necessarily for, um, you know, the extreme clean that we did when we knew less about the virus, but, you know, we are committed to continuing to use those best practices and where there might be the need for a deeper cleaning, we certainly will be proactive and do so. Also, under, let's see, under the cleaning, um, I did remove that, or we did remove limiting shared materials, we feel as though, you know, materials can be shared again, again, you know, having clean hands, cleaning things is, is, you know, common sense and that we should, you know, continue to conduct ourselves with common sense. And we're also saying that staff will continue to be expected to adhere to appropriate personal protective equipment guidelines, that's been removed because there's no guidelines that we should be following. Contact tracing, there is no contact tracing. Here is where we are saying that COVID-19 is a communicable disease and as such, among Department of Health's listing of reportable diseases, uh, we will follow our policy 203 with respect to, you know, how we report any other communicable disease. However, within that, I did leave the requirements for anyone who is sick with COVID right now. The guidelines are that if you're sick, you should stay out for five days. If you've tested positive, it's five days and then returning to school or work on your sixth day and should be wearing a mask. Just keeping that in there so that everyone knows, you know, what our expectation is with respects to this virus and how it's being managed everywhere else. And then we, you know, continued to just leave the additional resources in there with respects to isolation and quarantine and that's just informational only, we're not saying that we're applying it in any, in any way. That's why it's under additional resources. And again, you know, if a staff member is diagnosed or a student with, you know, COVID, they are required to follow their recommendation of their attending physician and/or the Department of Health if they're involved. We did leave in a piece about cancellation of athletic and extracurricular events. We're not really sure, you know, what's going to occur with this virus this fall, how it may impact things that are extracurricular where, you know, students are in contact sports, so we're going to leave that up to the, the individual athletic directors, the coaches, to determine whether or not, if there seems to be a lot of students that are out sick as a result of maybe having COVID, um, you know, that they have the ability to be able to reschedule competitions or other activities and giving their, that flexibility. We're not requiring, you know, screenings, you know, of temperature checks, et cetera. However, we just wanted to, you know, put in there that, you know, any kind of cancellation would be up to those athletic directors that are conducting the schedules. Efforts to provide vaccinations, we will continue to be a resource should there be a need and we will continue to communicate with those that are looking for places to receive vaccinations. Under the appropriate accommodations for students with disabilities, that information remains the same. Everything should be conducted through a student's IEP or 504 plan. And then again, um, as far as coordination with state and local health, we continue to main existing partnerships with the local and state agencies and, um, as with any communicable disease, Boyertown will continue to electronically report to the Department of Health because that is one requirement that we were given. And the rest is, the last time that we voted on this, I will have these changes sitting out on the website leading up to our meeting, um, at the end of the month and at which time we will put that on the itemized agenda for approval and then, you know, any further discussion, you know, that, that may have come up as a result of any public comment. So that completes my portion of it, but is there, are there any questions right now for me?
Yeah, I'm glad to see we're staying mask-free, that was fantastic. I did have a question because people were contacting me. Note went out or something about the buses?
Well, a, a communication went out from Culbordale and many times, we don't try to reinvent the wheel and we take what we've used the previous year and even through the folks going through and looking at it, they, they missed the part about having to wear masks on buses. They corrected that immediately, we put it out on Facebook that that was a miss, um, I don't want to say quote, but it, that was misinformation. We- We apologize for it, but at this point, there is not a requirement for masks to be worn on buses or in our pre-K classrooms. We made sure that there were no mandates that we were needing to comply by. So we apologize to the public for that. Immediately, the principal contacted me. She was, she felt very badly, and I said, "Let's just get it out," and I know that Mrs. Moyer did her best to promote that, so, yeah.
Thanks. Yeah, at this point in the pandemic, I think this makes a lot of sense. And I know it took, it's been a huge administrative effort through the years, so I just wanted to, again, say thank you. And I also just wanted to take a moment and thank, you know, our parents, the kids, all the staff. These have been a tough couple of years, and I know that many people have had different viewpoints, but I think as a community, it's really great that we're moving forward and getting back to normal, so thank you.
Okay, so when you put this all together, you met with your nursing, your health staff, your nurses, correct? Is that right?
She was just one of the members I met with the administration, our principals.
Okay.
Yes.
And so you don't meet with any board members for this? This isn't a policy? This is an administrative ordeal?
Correct.
So the only thing I'm concerned about, only because the rhetoric's always out there that something's coming, or something's going to get stronger, and I don't want to, as a board member, we shouldn't have to revisit our, the safeguards that we put in place for having to go virtual. So that parents aren't panicking as soon as something, like if this fall, there's, you know, COVID numbers start to go up a little bit, we're not going to rush to the virtual. And that's why we put in the additional safeguards here, and now they're all crossed out, and I, that I don't agree with. I realize we're not, we're just discussing, but I'm letting you know. I don't agree with that. I think we need to keep that in place, or we're just going to be back to where we were in January, or even last fall, and I wasn't here. I mean, this was discussed over and over again, and I think that's just foolish to take that out.
The reason that we're recommending to pull it out is that we're not looking to move to virtual at all.
I understand that, but things change in this environment that we live in today. Things change too quickly, and I don't want to say that's not true, but I'm putting, I think it's a safeguard we should keep.
Then I would say that surrounding that safeguard, I think that we really need to look at the realistic threshold, and the other problem is the amount of compliance from our community members, our families, in being able to report, you know, if there is a positive case. I'm certainly open for discussion, and, you know, I can understand your point of view. However, Mr. Stout is going to be doing a presentation as well on moving to flexible instruction days, which we have applied for and have been approved for, that would give us the ability to be flexible in the event that we would have a need to move any building. And quite honestly, we have the ability to move or close a building based upon lots of reasons, you know. Right, you know, when we lose power, or we lose water, etc., we can, you know, call for an early dismissal, we can, you know, close a building the next day. But I understand, and respectfully, I appreciate your comments there, but I, that piece gets taken quite literally, and I think that we, maybe, maybe it needs to be a statement, and, you know, that's something that we can get as input over the next two weeks. We're not voting on anything tonight, and if you would, if you want to think about it and help me, we can talk and talk through some wordage of how we might be able to capture that.
The other issue I have, thank you, was the vaccination, the efforts to provide vaccination to school communities. I think that really, as a school, all we should ever say is see your healthcare provider, because we cannot tell a parent, or, I mean, I know we're not telling them, but we see the signs out there everywhere. You want a vaccine, you go to CVS, you can go to Giant, you can go everywhere. I think on here, all we should say is see your healthcare provider, because then it will not become a community issue, because some people are pro and some people are con, and that way you just say, "Go to your doctor," because that's really where you should be going. That's, you know.
And part of that question is coming from this state document and asking us how we will address it, and that was just the answer. But we can certainly, you know, emphasize too, you know, as always, you listen to what your health provider recommends.
So, Ms. Torshe, this will be on the school website?
Yes. It will sit on the school website. Mrs. Moyer will put out this draft copy with some, you know, just direction, you know, to take a look at it, send any inquiries to us, and, you know, we'll then put it on for approval. No other questions about the health and safety plan? Great. All right, moving right along to review of Policy 707, Use of School Facilities. This has been a work in progress for quite a long time, and has been something that has come to the administration's level with regards or respects to the amount of organizations looking to utilize our facilities, and, you know, making sure that we are treating everybody, everyone equally. The last, or not the last, the current policy, the way that it is stated, doesn't quite go into detail with regards to people who are utilizing our buildings, whether they're Class I, Class II, Class III, Class IV, Class V, etc. And that's really a part of the administrative regulation. But as far as the policy itself, which is what the board adopts, is with respects to utilizing our facility, and the one change that, or the one addition that we are looking to implement is the fact that it does take a staff person many hours to be working through the applications for the use of our facilities, along with incorporating a cost for the software program school due to be able to utilize. So we believe that adding a $25 application fee would be, you know, beneficial for the school district. Again, this is our own, this is our recommendation. Within the current policy, there were a few other areas that were really outdated, that we've removed from the policy, and, sorry, I have my notes right here. I just want to point that out. I did provide that to you in your weekly information that you received. So under the current policy, we were looking to remove the part about minimal participants. It says recreational activities sponsored by a non-school-related organization or by a community group shall have at least 10 participants, excluding officials. Any recreational activities that have less than the required number of participants shall be canceled. It is a responsibility of the sponsoring group to notify the superintendent. We felt like that was not relevant, you know, that if you're looking to utilize our facility, you know, it doesn't matter what the number of participants are, the least number of participants are. So we believe that that was something that should be removed. And then the other thing that we were looking to change was fee schedule. The use of school facilities for activities directly related to the educational program and district operation shall be without cost to users, except that the user may be responsible for extra custodial fee. The board will establish the applicable fee schedules in consideration of recommendations made by the superintendent and designee. The individual requester and/or group is responsible for any and all fees assigned through approved facility usage. That was getting captured in the other parts of our policy. And then one other area with the current policy is under application evaluation, number five, individual or community group uses school facilities in excess of five times during any calendar year or for the same purpose, this limitation shall not apply to individual athletic contests. We didn't want to, you know, restrict a community group from utilizing our facility more than five times, and obviously, we weren't complying with that in some cases. So we believe that those were items that should be removed. And then as far as security, the superintendent or designee may require the sponsoring organization obtaining adequate police protection, which we do, or traffic control, which is old language. Labor charges for police protection and/or traffic control shall be negotiated between the organization. We changed a little bit of wordage there in our new policy as it pertains to security. So that is the policy itself that we are making recommendations to, and the biggest change there would be adding that $25 application fee, one-time application fee. It's not something that you come, you would, that we would be recommending for multiple use. It's if you're applying to use our building and you're, this organization, it's a one-time application fee. Again, it's a recommendation, it's something to talk about, to discuss, it's, you know, for discussion. So we'll start with that part of the policy. Yes, Mrs. Snyder?
Okay, the application fee. First of all, you said, I think you said it's going to be used towards software, purchase of software?
No, it just helps, you know, we do pay for software, and Ms. Dan Collet, you might be able to speak better to a school dude than myself, but there is a specific software that you use to help to mitigate and manage all the facility use.
My thing, though, is it's going to be, you're paying it once a year, correct?
Correct.
And we have people that have been using our facilities for so many years. Why do we want to charge them? I know we have fees, but we're paying the people to be here to begin with.
Oh, yes, they're working in their position, absolutely, yeah.
I mean, we're trying to nickel and dime these people, and you just heard tonight, we have organizations out there that are going to probably wind up folding if we go through with some of this stuff. And I'm sorry, I cannot and will not support anything like that. We have people that have been using our facilities since I was a kid. I'm not going to say how long that's been, but we have the bell snickle that's been at the Boyer Town Junior High, it's been at the Senior High, it's, how can we do this to our community? Our community already pays taxes to us. That's why this is up for discussion. So hearing what I heard tonight and seeing this schedule, I just did a little math, and if you're a Class V person, and you were a Class III before, you probably went up like 50%. How can some of these organizations keep going? And it's already, it's, okay, so you want to put a higher thing on, higher rate, you want to, the business is already being taxed if it's a business, the people that go to the business are being taxed as property owners, and yet it's going to be passed on to them. So if it's my child going to something, I'm a taxpayer, I'm already paying taxes to the school district, and now because they want to put fees out here, and I'm not saying we don't charge, and I know things haven't been, you know, going up, but this is a bit much.
Ms. Dan Collet, do you have?
And then we...
Okay. I wasn't sure if you had a comment, okay.
Then we're charging to me, if I'm outside the school district, I'm being charged the same thing somebody is being charged inside the school district. Where's the logic behind that? Or am I getting ahead of the game?
I think you're getting a little bit ahead, yeah. So I understand that your input, your comment is that perhaps a $25 application fee shouldn't be applied.
Maybe it's a one-time and done, but not every year. I could see to get it up, get it started, but even then, it's...
Okay. Thank you. Ms. Hogan?
Thank you. So I'm looking at the current policy. It's the last paragraph of the strikeouts, or it says, "Use of school facilities for activities related or directly related to the educational program and district operations shall be without cost to users, except that the user may be responsible for extra custodial fees." So I would, the way I'm reading this and understanding it, is that organizations like our PTOs would then have to pay this application fee and pay hourly. Is that correct?
Depending on what the event would be, and depending on when it's taking place, is how we were looking at it. We looked at a couple of school districts who were comparable in size to us, and fee structures that were being used in a large Berks County school and a large Montgomery County school, and we just looked, you know, straight down how other school districts were leveraging, you know, their facilities use, and what organizations they were also, you know, charging. So we were just trying to capture, you know, everyone. We didn't want, you know, anyone to be, you know, penalized because you are an organization, but you're doing something different, but yet we have another organization that's doing essentially the same, but we're doing some, they're not getting charged the same thing. So what we're trying to do is establish some type of consistency across the board. So without looking at the fee structure side by side, which I didn't, you know, present yet, I was just looking at the policy the way that it stands, and then I would bring forward, you know, the other pieces of it. But essentially, it depends, because not every situation where our school organizations are, are their administrators on, so there's always somebody, there's always some type of an extra cost. Let me think about examples. Go ahead.
But for instance, for the PTOs, if they're having their regular monthly meeting, and they're just using a classroom, and it doesn't require extra custodial fees, there's no, there's no charge for that. It's those events where the district's incurring additional fees, overtime fees, security fees in some instances, like if there's, like a Saturday fair, carnival, something like that, those would be the instances where the district's incurring additional fees that they wouldn't normally incur.
Yes, I understand that, but the PTOs, their sole purpose is to raise funds for the schools, and also to help with socialization for our children, which is important in any year, but especially coming out of pandemic, and especially given what we are now learning about the social and emotional health of children. I think the work that they do is exceptionally valuable, and they're volunteer organizations, so nobody's making a profit from what they do. And I think that charging them is just, is wrong, so I won't support that. Thank you.
I agree with that as far as charging the PTOs and things like that, or raising money. Any organization's raising money for the kids shouldn't be charged. The other thing, you and Mrs. Dieroff collaborated this, correct?
Yeah.
No? Okay.
This work was done between the business office and my office, and the only collaboration with Mrs. Dieroff was communication that we would be bringing this policy forward.
Okay.
Basically, the reason we started this was because of costs, okay? I believe, and that was just of us starting this, looking into this, and again, we're looking into this. We do have long-term unions with some of these groups, and I think at some point, whether it's set up as an administrator or set up as an executive board, that if somebody comes through, and let's just say it's the Twirlers, we've had that relationship, that we waive the fee, you know, because they do so much for them. But what we're trying to do is probably keep away a lot of new groups that would want our facilities. But this does cost us money, electric, but I do believe that if we have a relationship with a previous organization, and they've been doing something as good as you guys do, I think there should be, there could be a way, or should be a way, that we can work around it. But I do feel we should have some kind of fee for some of these smaller groups that, you know, again, we do have custodians, we have electric. I mean, it's hitting us just as hard as it's hitting the people, and that's what this was all set up originally for. It was never to go after a group in particular. And listening to tonight's comments and to the letters that have been sent to us, I think there's a way, again, tonight's a night for discussion, that we could look into this and probably set up some kind of policy that deals with our relationships that have been over the years. I do feel, though, if it's a for-profit and they're using... I do feel though, if it's a for-profit and they're using our facilities, you know, to make money, that they should be charged. So, and nobody, this isn't to make money off of the, off of the organizations. This was just to offset our costs. So this wasn't an income thing for the school district. It was never set up to be an income. But, you know, there's other outside sources that use the facilities that have nothing to do with school. So, and those are the type of organizations that we feel should use and pay for our facilities. So I think amongst us, we can discuss a little more for some of the organizations that we've had a relationship with and maybe even set up some kind of review of policy. If that, if that group feels that they're not being charged fairly or being charged too much, maybe we can set something up with an executive committee of the board or leave it in Mrs. Torch's hand.
Excuse me, was there a question about my involvement on the fees?
Yes.
Mrs. Dieroff, the question was that we were working in collaboration with you and my response to Mrs. Scott was that we worked in collaboration with you in that we left you know that we were moving this forward and shared this with you in advance of this meeting, but...
Now, I understand that, but did she have a question?
I'm not sure.
Well, did you have a question?
Not at this time, Mrs. Dieroff, I'm just confirming.
Thank you, Mr. Zawad. Mr. Panaral, do you have any questions?
It sounds like a lot of the questions are, or comments are along the classification line on who's going to have to pay what in what classification. I'm sure that can be worked on, that can be discussed to getting people put into certain classifications. That's why we're talking about it now, that's why it's out here. In fairness to all of the people in the, in the district, you have to put some sign of, some port of parameters on the building use. Now, what that turns out to look like, I don't know, I couldn't tell you. But I heard Mrs. Nyman saying, you know, we're charging, these people are paying taxes and are also paying other things, so why are they paying this? Well, it's a bunch of people that are paying taxes or paying other things and aren't using these facilities, so what's fair to them also? So yeah, it's a juggling act as to what fairness really means in this case. But I think most of the portion is those groups that come in and want to use the facilities to make money, and there's a bunch of them out there that want to do that, we need to charge them appropriately as other school districts do. This is not something that's not done anywhere else, it's done just about everywhere else. We've been behind on this, and not saying that it's good or bad, we've had a lot, we've had a lot of handshake deals over the years. Unfortunately, handshake deals with one group is not fair to another group. So somehow we got to quantify this, qualify it, and put some regulations around it. So when you charge one group, if you have nothing that you're going to be, as a standard, another group's going to come to you and say, "Why don't I get that deal?" So that's what we're trying to get to. If that's simply what, this is not a moneymaker. These fees are nominal at best. The only one I would question is the HVAC fee. I would, I would like to have more discussion on the HVAC fee because I don't think that's, I'm not sure I like that one. It's part of running the building. So I think, yeah, there's more discussion. I think most of the discussion's got to be around who's in what classification. And how we're going to not hurt pure support-type groups or pure groups that are, that are only, only charity-type groups that are trying to do a thing for the community. We don't want to hurt them, so we work on classifications to see how we don't do that. But I don't think we can continue going on with no rules and no classifications and no no parameters around building use. That's, you know, that's, that's what we're looking for, and that's what I think the board's got to come to an agreement on, on what's that going to look like? But it has to look like something. It can't just be where we've been.
Wish everybody would have came to my defense when I rented the place to earn money for the new stadium.
Oh, go ahead, Ms. Nyman.
I paid top dollar for everything, including air.
Okay, my turn. Can we get a list of the organizations that use our facilities? One. And when we do charge the fees, what does that money go towards? I mean, I know we have to pay the electric and all that.
It just goes to support the general fund. It's part, it's a line item within the general fund facility rental fees.
Okay, so it's not per se used to...
Do anything, it doesn't go to support anything additional? It just goes to support the cost of operating the facilities.
I mean, because like I said, I know the electric, you're using the air conditioning. I'm okay with some of that stuff, but some of the fees, if it is already a business that's in the district, is paying taxes to us, we should not be charging them the same fee we're charging somebody who's coming from outside the district.
This is great discussion. We can definitely take these all, you know, into consideration and look at those that are within the district versus out.
It is, yes, much harder.
Not the way I'm looking at it.
Are you looking at the...
But if I'm a business in the district and I want to rent cafeteria or whatever, and I'm, I'm going to be charged whatever cafeteria thing is.
What you're looking at right now is what we're recommending, but currently, those fees are much larger. And part of what, and I don't mean to cut you off, I apologize, because this is good discussion and I think that, you know, maybe moving... Anyway, I just want to respond to you. So currently, if you look at our current policy right now and the administrative regulations that go along, that's where the HVAC and such is broken down. We were only separating out that if you had a, if you needed a custodian and that custodian has already worked their 40 hours, that we need to be able to find that, right, pay for that. But we weren't, we weren't going in with regard to the HVAC cost. We were using that as part of that facility rental, if you're looking at the proposed document. And we certainly were looking at the cost for those companies that are coming from out of state because during the...
Not out of state, out of the...
Out of the, the, some are actually out of state that are coming to utilize.
That's why I'd like to see the list.
Correct, so, and we do have that list and I can share that with the school board. But I think that this is great discussion, it gives us a place to start. But we also need to make sure that every nonprofit is getting the same opportunity because some are paying and some are not. And you also, and I'm not picking on the Legionettes because you're here, it's just because you're, you're fresh, but you know, some, some organizations are utilizing a building facility two times a week and that does put some pressure on the use of that facility for our own students, our own things that we're doing. So, you know, we really need to set up some type of structure. And this is what we're bringing forward and this is just kind of where we wanted to start and talk further. And what I will then do with Mr. Hemmingway as the policy chair is I'll ask for a separate working session meeting and those board members that want to participate will have a public meeting and we'll work through this, you know, collectively together. So everyone has those documents. I'm not going to go any further, we'll remove the, moving it for first reading. And we'll continue to work on, on this, you know, as, as a group. Does that answer, like that, that puts us in the right direction?
And maybe get some input from the community, from the Legionettes and whatever else is that. You know, get from the PTOs. Maybe instead of the PTOs each meeting at their own buildings, we could combine and meet at one building in separate rooms, but, and that way we're not using every building, you know, trying to...
A working, a working meeting and be able to take the input from, from the audience, absolutely. Working compared to, different than other policy meetings. Yeah. Perfect. Mrs. Hogan?
Sorry, okay. I don't know why it's doing that. Sorry, no, it's fine. So one of the things I thought about was our nonprofit groups, and I do understand that, you know, nonprofits serve a large variety of missions. But the nonprofits that have missions that align with our mission, serving children of the community, that would be nonprofits like the Legionettes, like the youth sports teams that are not district ones. So those organizations, they support, you know, local, our, our community children and they feed into our sports teams, a lot of them, which in the end benefits us. They develop students, discipline, we know that sports and all these activities help children on various levels, including academic ones. So I think we should really look at those fees, like if we could break them out by nonprofits, you know, ones that are, like I said, similar to aligning with our mission. I don't want to charge the Legionettes or the, I can't remember what the small kids, thank you, those, those types of organizations, these fees.
And you have to remember that there are organizations that are already paying fees to utilize our facilities. So we're going to need to examine that. So that's information, obviously, that we have and we can bring forward and we can get it itemized. It's going to take a little bit longer because it does fall on the responsibilities of Ms. Dan Nicole as administrative assistant and we haven't asked her to go ahead and break those down. So we'll let her go ahead and get started on that work. When we have that work ready, then we will, you know, bring it forward to the board. Would you agree on, Mr. President, Mr. Vice President?
Yes, Torsha, I would recommend just for, we've been spending a lot of time and we already just got past the $25 fee. But to be fair, I guess we have to, could I recommend that we officially table this discussion and move it to a working session that would be public, that we could get insight from them? I think you've got a lot to, a lot of direction from the destruction.
The destruction?
Destruction, destruction of this policy. But anyway, just for, for tonight's, I think it would be best if we moved that to a separate meeting and invite you all back, you know, for your comments again. So I guess I would have to officially make a motion to table?
Well, these items are for discussion only right now, but the one thing that we will table will be the down under the superintendent's itemized agenda, we will table that first reading for policy 707.
Okay.
All right, we'll, we'll get to that when we get there. All right, Mr. Hemmingway?
Sounds good to me.
All right, and then, so therefore that ends my discussion. I'm going to turn over the mic to Mr. Stout and Dr. Foley. Is he back there? He, oh, he is hiding, there he is. All right, I'm, I'm finished. Thank you, everyone. We appreciate the input and it gives us a place to start from, so thank you.
I was looking for that red shirt again, I didn't, I didn't see it back.
I turned it off a little bit, you know. Well, thank you for letting me speak with you this evening, I appreciate it. There was some discussion at the end of the school year this year, in particular, talking about some advanced courses, advanced classes and our DE or our dual-enrolled students and kind of how we work with those students and kind of some plans to hopefully move forward and continue to grow this program soon. So I'd like to start off first of all with the program of studies. We do a program of studies presentation typically in the November-ish time of school year because, and I'll get to this in a few minutes, because that really begins our timeline, actually, our timeline for scheduling for next year has already begun because we start getting those things ready now with those courses and those, building new courses and things for the upcoming school year. But basically, the program of studies is there is a document that houses all the instructional planning and guidance for all of our VASH students. It, it kind of lays out the academics, it lays out course descriptions, it lays out some ideas and plans, and also helps us to help students plan what classes they need to take in succession so that they can get to where they want to be come graduation time. So it acts as a guide for our students for course selection process as well as the parents. Go to the next slide. So the scheduling timeline, as you know, we'll, we come to you again in November begging you for approval for our program of studies. And what I mean by that is, is we, like I say, we're building coursework now for the beginning of school year next year. But that process takes a while because we have to have all the curricular things in place and then I press Mr. Stout here really hard about OTL. Can we get these materials? Can we do this? Can we do that? Because of that slice of the pie. Typically, we move forward with a zero budget impact because we understand the importance of all those pieces as well. So we begin to look at programs and we begin to look at coursework for the upcoming school year. So January, once that's approved, January, we begin getting this information out with our parents and our students. And then February, March timeline, this is when we really have a lot of input with our students. And they begin to meet with counselors and at that point, they begin to do the course selection for the upcoming school year. So by April, May, we try to have all those things finalized and we begin to create a master schedule. We build a dynamic schedule every year. And what I mean by that is, is what happens in January, February, and March is important for us to build that schedule. So we start fresh with a new schedule every year. Now, obviously, there are standard courses that are going to run every time, based upon the core courses and things that we need to do with our students. But then we also have a lot of elective courses that may or may not run based upon student selection. And again, for us to take our resources, look at them and best balance that schedule as we, as we best can to provide our students the most opportunities as possible. Also, you're going to see a little bit more in the future, us looking at certification-type programs because with the Act 158 information about students having pathways to be able to get to graduation, those are going to be real critical. So for example, I'm going to use Mr. Cho for example, and through the foundation, he's got some really cool equipment over in the tech ed room. If you haven't seen it, you need to come and see it. Anyway, long story short there is, is maybe we can start looking at some kind of welling certifications. But again, that's an industry-level certification. I'm going to go over to our food classes because there's also a food safe certification that is now an acceptable certification for our students in order for them to help with their graduation process through the Act 158. But anyway, you'll see some of that kind of stuff coming through as we begin to build those new courses and we continue to look at focusing on helping students get to graduation for the next step. But then we, that takes us to May and June. So May and June, what we try to do is once we have how many sections of each course are going to be able to run and realize some courses that are not going to be able to run, we begin to meet with students and talk about those conflicts. All right, you have to take this or this, which one you want to take and how's it going to work? So that we can then dial in what that master schedule looks like. And then we use July and August to kind of balance all those sections and pieces out so that when August rolls around, we're ready to open up the, the schedules, which again, for, for VASH, that we will open the schedule up to students and parents on the 15th, August 15th, so they'll be having that information to them very soon. But even as today, we're still making some fine tunes, adjustments and things like that, just because we're doing our best to balance our resources. So now let's talk a little bit about the honors courses. So all of our standard or core courses, such as English, you know, math, science, social studies, they also have different levels within those. So for example, our core course is always going to be steeped into the state standards. And that is what every student is going to get and that's kind of at a college preparatory level. So that is the standard where we start. And then we get into the honors level courses, and I'm going to tell you, even biology, for example, our honors biology class that we teach at VASH is also a DE class for Harrisburg University. And what I mean by that is, is they come in and they vet our coursework and they look at it and they say, "Ooh, this is what our first level college kids are getting as well." So therefore, if they choose to get credit for that at the college level within that very same class, they can. There's fees they got to pay and things like that, and we'll talk about that in a few minutes. But there are a lot of our courses that are like that. Our AP courses lots of times can be also doubled up as a DE course and we'll, we'll go into some details about that. But things like English, our Algebra II, our calculuses and, and some of our social studies classes and stuff are at honors level. And that's because we require a little more from students to do that. So for example, the, the pace is probably faster, there's a lot more in-depth reading. There's a lot more rigor that's added into those courses because we expect more from those students because we need to challenge them more. Also, a thing that you need to understand is, is that our honors courses have a bump weighted for the GPA. So we have our courses that everybody gets a grade in, but if you take an honors level course, then you also get a .1 bump, so one tenth of a bump for your final grade of a C or higher. So that's important when we're doing the GPAs and class ranks. Okay, go to the next slide. So we talked about the AP courses. So students in the AP courses are, you have to understand, is a college board-regulated program. So for example, for our teachers to be able to teach AP courses, we have to send them to a place to get AP training. Once they have that AP training, then they're allowed to teach the course. And this is the way college board tries to do their best to hold the standard the same for all courses, no matter where, what high school they're taught in, anywhere in the United States. So that's kind of one of the levels there. And based upon that, some colleges will accept the AP courses for credit. My experience is, is that most colleges, if it's your major and that's a score that you've scored that they accept and most of the time it's a four or a five, that they will offset credit for. They may not necessarily give you credit for in your subject matter. So for example, I'm a chemistry major, I got a five on my AP chemistry test, I'm going in to be a chemical engineer, they may not give me credit for that in college because I'm heading in that specific area. However, they'll give it to me as a... However, they'll give it to me as an elective credit, if that makes sense. Um, so there, there are some caveats with that, and not every school or university will do that. Some do, some don't, it just depends on where you're at, what's going on, and every college is a little bit different in how they offer or accept those things. Students also may be, be through these courses, be eligible for honor or special programs when they get to college. So for example, we have some students that are going from here to like Pitt, the Pitt Honors College, for example, and they, based upon the level of AP courses and things they've taken here, then they get accepted there into the honors college, based upon that coursework and their, um, their performances on those AP exams. AP courses, test preparation, scores, it impacts the media ratings, and I know some of you are following along with this, and, um, the good news is, every year since I've been here, we've been able to increase that. But it's not really me, it's about the kids. The kids are accepting the learning that is necessary for them to score well on the test. So when we look at the SMP and we see where we're at, and I believe this year we're up to eighty-fourth, ranked eighty-fourth, um, so that's about 10 places higher than we were last year, last year we were in the nineties. But that is all steeped in this information. So what SMP will do to look at that, to make those ratings, they'll say, all right, your kids are scoring very well on these tests based upon this, and how many kids are taking those tests, how many tests are taken, and, and their overall scores. So there's a combination of that which forces that issue to, to rise. I will also say that that's also a slippery slope sometimes, because sometimes if we want to force kids to, or encourage kids to take other classes in other areas, DE, for example, it doesn't get the same recognition, at this point at least, that could be changed, but right now it does not get the same recognition as the AP courses do. So that's a, you know, a balance that we have to try to do, and we'll talk about DE in a few minutes about that. Uh, most of the AP courses, honor courses, as well as our DE courses, do require summer work. Some of it can be very extensive, and a lot of independent reading, a lot, a lot of independent work, even during the course of the year, there's a lot of independent work that goes on with those. AP students, as a result of that, of getting a C or higher, will get a point two bump in their GPA. So again, to force class rank and where they fall in those class rankings would be based upon how they do well on these particular, uh, courses. The cost for each exam, uh, last year was about $94, um, that is, that's something the district does not pay for that. To also explain a little bit about the media piece earlier on, some of the schools that are higher than us, they have a, a program where the school will pay for every student to take that AP exam, or every AP exam that they take. So they kind of, you know, have a little bit more in sauce in, in, in the bucket there based upon them being able to pay for those exams for students. However, we do have a couple of programs in place that financial aid is available for students who need that, that should never be a prohibitive factor for them not to be able to take the exam, because we do make funds available for them to take all exams, if they choose to do that, so. Now, we talked about building a dynamic course every year, and one of the things I want you to understand is, is not every course will run every year. Again, it's based upon student enrollment, student request within that class, and it's also based upon the resources available for those classes. So, um, if you look at the PowerPoint that's up there, and you can see everything that is highlighted in the blue, those are the courses that are running this coming school year. So you can see all of our AP courses are running this year with the exception of two. We just didn't have enough students to be able to run those courses and best use our resources. So that's why you see that. I'm going to the next one. So let's talk a little bit about DE or dual enrollment courses. Courses are taught in the high school and are also eligible for high school as well as college credit. So currently, we have two colleges/universities that work with us. So for example, we have Montgomery County Community College, and we also have Harrisburg University. So the process that our teachers go through to be able to teach this, technically, they're adjunct professors for each one of those institutions. So they apply, they all get vetted out, they basically, they go through an interview process in order for them to be able to teach those courses to represent that particular college or university. So we have several of our teachers that have gone through this process and do that, and therefore, they become the professors for that, and the advantage of that is, is the college takes away a lot of the extra fees, and therefore, the credits per credit is much cheaper for our students to be able to take that, and they don't even have to leave our school. Okay, so last year, if you look at, um, the, the cost for a class from Harrisburg University was about $300, it was like $99 a credit, so around $300 per credit. If you haven't paid for a college class recently, you'll know that that's a huge discount. Montgomery County College last year, it was about $65 per credit, or about $195 per class last year. That's if you take it here at this school with our teachers. Okay? We do have, in some cases, that we have students actually going physically to the college or the university to take those courses, of which they still allow even our Berks County students at Montgomery County Community College to get our discount if we run it through our school. So we have a program set up where we let them build a school, and then we build a parent for that amount. So it's still $300 per credit, and that's a huge, huge savings. As I mentioned earlier, many of our DE classes run concurrently with either our AP or our honor level courses. So again, they've looked at our curriculum, they've met with our teachers, and they look at what we're teaching our students, and they say, wow, this is kind of what we're doing in this level, and this is where this matches up with this class in, at the college or in the university. So a lot of that happens within our, our, our classes now. Yeah, I'm going to the next one. So if you look at the highlighted ones that are ones that'll be running this coming school year, again, the ones that are highlighted in the blue, the ones that did not have enough students at this point to run this year are, you can see there. And when we look at things like Spanish III and some of the other courses, again, those are a lot of courses that are run concurrently, but the students just may not sign up for the college credit, okay? Some of those classes are still running, however, they may not be signed up for the college credit. Thank you. See? There's a side joke about this, because Mrs. Kramer didn't leave me a bottle of water tonight. She always does, and tonight she didn't. I'll send her an email tomorrow, I'll tease her. Anyway, um, so, but anyway, this is a great opportunity for our students, if you want to go to the next slide. Now, these are, this is data from last year, because we're still in the process of getting the data together for this year, but if you look at this, we have 525 students that took AP courses. 327 students of that 525 took 521 different AP tests. Okay? So when we talk about the SMP, you can see why we're, we're doing well, because we have a large volume of kids taking the test, and doing well on it, why they take it. If you look at 36 seats, for one example, is 36 seats were filled in sections combined with an AP and DE course. So for example, our AP DE GOV class, they were getting AP credit, and they could have also chosen to take DE credit with that. So they can double dip in those particular cases. If they take the AP exam, pay those fees, and they score high enough, some colleges will accept that. However, if you take any of our DE classes, at Montgomery County, at college, we also have some of our students going through the BCTC that also take advantage of RAC. If you have those credits and you go to a state school, which about, I would say, like 45, 47% of our students go to a state college, there's already articulation agreements between the community college and those state schools, because it's all part of the state school system. So therefore, those credits are automatically transferred into that college and university. For example, my daughter took classes at RAC while she was in high school, and then the year after she was out of high school, and then transferred to Millersville University, and every one of those transferred into Millersville University because of that agreement. This is one example. Okay, so if we look at, moving on to this, we have 511 seats that were filled with DE classes during last school year. So 511 students or seats, classes were taken with our students taking DE classes while they attended Voyartown High School. 198 of them are earning Montgomery County College credits, and again, um, approximately 145 of those students were gaining Harrisburg University credits. It's been interesting working with Harrisburg University, if you've never been there, it's pretty remarkable. You walk in, and it's probably one of the highest tech places I've been in. You wouldn't think that, but when you walk in, it's pretty, pretty amazing. And in fact, they're working with one of the local hospitals there, and they just bought one of the hotels that was next door to it, and now it is going to become their whole medical suite. So they're going to be doing all kinds of nursing, medical technicians, and all those kind of things, they're going to be running through that program as well, and that's almost a completion. So there's a lot of opportunity for our students to start here and then continue there, and they can do that at extremely reasonable, uh, a price, and come out with a very, very nice career, should, so they choose to do that. I was there last summer, and I walked in, and there's all these computer screens all over the place, and there was probably about 50 students, and I'm talking about between third grade and high school. And they were on a break, and they were all talking to each other, and then I said, they said, go, they all just sit down, put those headphones on, and got those, it was an esports gaming camp. It leaves me out, I, I got, you know, but anyway, the point of it is, is they were there, they were so engaged, and it was really cool to watch what happened in, in that particular case. But anyway, so that's kind of the process that we go through to help our students get an opportunity to gain college credits before they leave here. Many of our students walk out definitely with enough credits to surpass their freshman year, many of them are well into their sophomore year, or, as you recognize from last year, we had a student that actually graduated two weeks before he graduated high school from Montgomery County Community College with his associate's degree. So, and that, that happens. We, we, that's our first one to do a full completion, however, we had many students going out, probably at the sophomore level. So, I'm going to the next slide. So how about you? What questions you have for me?
I always have questions. Um, so I just wanted to, I have two questions. So when you say, um, that AP classes run based on student enrollment, and, and I think you said, and resources available for that class?
Available.
What does that mean?
So what I mean for, i- is, for example, if we have a, a class that has only eight students signed up for it, then that is not enough students for us to be able to run a class. Uh, so we have to take that resources and move it where we have a larger group of kids that may need other courses, and that's what I mean by that.
Okay, so we haven't cut any AP courses?
Oh, no.
Due to like teacher availability?
Oh, no.
Or staffing issues?
No, no DE classes, none of that, because of that, no, it's just where we need to best use our resources.
Okay, thank you. And then, um, just one other question. So for the DE classes, I know, um, I believe I asked this last year, and I just don't remember the answer, I apologize, is aid offered for our low-income students that would be FAFSA-eligible if they were actual college-level students?
Because they run through the high school, there's Title IV fund available for them, yes.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it.
You did answer, yes, and I know I answered it at the end of.
You didn't. I was trying to text it.
Dr. Foley was following.
I was trying to text you, I was trying to text it, sorry.
Thank you.
Other questions?
I guess, so the big thing I hear, and which, which goes into my ear a lot, is that we have study halls, that we, we, I'm not going to say the words I hear and I don't agree with, we force kids into. So there, there's kids into, is there any way that we can utilize that time, that we put them in there, for, for the, for the, you know, for the kids that can do this? I mean, it's not, it's not for everybody, I know that, that we can actually help them, move them into these programs and better utilize their time and, you know, the, our resources?
Right, so, just so you understand, I think this is, is kind of a double-sided question, and what I mean by that is, is the answer, the simple answer is yes. The more complicated question is, number one, if our teachers that are vetted to teach those courses would not be available during that same timeframe, and those students are not interested in going that area, then the answer is no. However, I am working with Harrisburg University in, very closely, and I'm also working with a couple of the colleges and universities, Alvernia, Albright, some other places where we may be able to continue to expand. We're never going to give up on expanding. And to your point, there could be some possibilities of some online options for students versus them having to leave the campus to go, because travel's a big issue, we don't have public transportation here. And also, and some students just don't have transportation, and that's okay, but also, we also need to look at the availability of them and being able to work with us, so that we can vet out what needs to happen there and how that, what that structure would look like. So the answer, the, the long answer to that is, is yes, but there still needs to be some, some work due, and the heavy lifting is, is in process.
Yeah, I understand, there's a lot, there's still a lot of work, this is, you know, I just learned about this in the past year, where I really started to understand it. The online portion of it is what very much interested me for the use, utilization of students' time and resources while they're here, where we can, you know, help going, going forward.
Sure.
Also, the expansion to other universities, if that's possible, so that gives us more and more, and, that's us, that gives the students much more, you know, availability for more options.
Sure.
To where they can go and, and.
Sure.
You know, get themselves ready, so they're not coming out, they're not going to come out of college with huge student debts, and, and they'll be able to get there and get, get out of there quicker. I was very impressed with somebody that could graduate from here, two weeks after they graduated with their, their associate's degree, uh, and which also, that means it's also transferable if they want to go to a, to a four, four or five-year degree, which is great to hear. Uh, that's, that's, it's a great thing to be able to, somebody to be able to do that, but I only heard one kid, and, and I know we have all these, we have all these seats there, we have all these people into it, how do we expand the program so that we have more, more than just one student at the end of their, at the end of their senior year doing this? Is that possible? And is it something we can work toward, or am I just trying to get something that's, you know, pie in the sky?
It could be possible, you have to also understand that student had the ability of transportation to go on campus and do some other stuff on his own. So it is possible, but like I say, there's more logistics and things that need to be worked out, and we also have to consider other certifications. And what I mean by that is, is sometimes Montgomery County, and is working on some in certifications or industry-level certifications, Harrisburg University's working on some of those, so they may come out with a lab technician certification versus, you know, an associate's degree, but there are other things that we're looking at too, that would also help us with the Act 158 issues as well, so. So the answer is yes, I mean, we, and I know you don't know me that well, but I'm pretty persistent, and I don't, I don't give up.
Oh, no.
In fact, I don't give up easy, I just don't give up.
Yeah, I heard that, that's.
Okay.
So, um, two questions, two more questions, sorry. Does MOCO or Harrisburg that you know of offer any asynchronous classes that the kids could take directly through them?
They do offer some asynchronous classes, there is a different set of applications and stuff students need to go through, including either acupacers or placement tests and things like that, in order for them to get into that, because the way you have to do that is become a registered student with them currently, but there's, there's ways to do it.
Right.
Yes.
So if we had transportation, we could actually test children into that, or students into that program, and then have them take classes on campus at MOCO?
That, that is a possibility.
Right.
Yep.
Yeah, okay, I appreciate it, thank you.
I do have just one comment, um, Dr. Foley, something that came across my desk today was another institution looking to partner for dual enrollment, and it was a technical school, um, that should be coming your way. Much like, um, you know, Berks Technical Institute, or not Berks, but BTI, or, um, but I, I don't remember the name, but.
Okay.
A technical institute has reached out now, and I think that would be a, a wonderful addition to our dual enrollment opportunities, if it's something, um, that we find valuable, so.
Excellent.
Look, look out for that, it should.
I can't wait.
Across your desk.
Good. Anything else? Everybody good? If you have questions, you're not sure about something, shoot me an email. And again, thank you for letting me address you, I appreciate it.
Yeah, thanks for, thanks for that presentation, I know it's a, it's, it's very interesting to all of us, and also would believe it's interesting to the community, because it's a great benefit, so thank you.
Our kids can benefit, absolutely, thank you.
All right.
All right. I will move forward. So we're going to move right to the superintendent's consent agenda. We have listed under the consent, the second reading approval of Policies 06, 903. The treasurer's report from May of 2022, as I shared, this was something that was on, discussed. And then we were in such deep discussion that we did not move to adoption. And thank you to Ms. Hogan. I believe that you did bring that to our attention. So that's why that's here again. The approval of investment institutions is something that we do each day. Listed amongst the, the institutions that we use, Ambler Savings, Truist Bank of Utah, Fulton Invest National Portfolio, Pennsylvania Local Government Investment Trust, Pennsylvania School District Liquid Asset Fund, PNC, Santander Tompkins, Unives, Victory, Wells Fargo and Wilmington Savings Fund. These are from previous school year agendas that we have, you know, moved to consent items. And then in addition, we also have the tuition rates for the 21, 22 school year and estimated tuition rates for the 22, 23 school year. Each year, the Pennsylvania Department of Education issues the tuition rates that school districts use to bill other school districts and individuals who choose to send their students to Boyertown Area School District. The board will accept the following rates of tuition for the 22, or 2020, 21 school year and the 21, 22 school, or the 22, 23 school year. So I am looking for the, um, school board to, um, approve the consent agendas presented.
I have an objection.
I'll make a motion.
I have an objection to something on the consent agenda.
Sorry, Lisa, I'm trying to get, go ahead. I'm sorry. I'm saying
Yeah, thank you. So the, um, the, the second reading of Policies 006 and 903. There are, there are two separate objections I have here. So one, Policy 006, which, um, talks about the consent agenda, says that it is only for non-controversial items. These items are not non-controversial. They've had, um, plenty of discussion. And even though we have had lots of discussion, they don't by definition meet non-controversial. And the other thing is I'd like to draw my colleagues' attention to the, the verbiage at the bottom where it says Policy 06, Policy 903. If you look down at the bottom, it clearly states, "Our adopted rules of parliamentary procedure, Robert's rules, provide for a consent agenda listing several items for approval of the board by a single motion." And then there's a few more sentences, but the last sentence reads, "Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member." So I am requesting the Policy 006 and 903 be removed, not because I care to discuss them further, but because I wish to vote no to them and I don't wish to vote no to the rest of the consent agenda. Thank you.
I'll second that.
Well, hold on. She didn't make the motion. It was a request. So if you want to
I motion to, I apologize. You're right. I motioned to remove Policy 006 and 903 due to they do not follow our policy and also due to they don't follow. Placing them on this consent agenda does not follow Robert's Rules of Order and does not follow, like I said, that paragraph right at the bottom of the page.
Okay, so I have a motion from Ms. Hogan.
I'll second it.
And we have a second from Ms. Nyman. Would there be, I guess there would be discussion on the fact that they want to remove that from the consent? Is there any discussion on the fact for them wanting to remove it? Yes.
The discussion's going to go a little farther than that, but I'll try to stay focused on that.
Yeah, I prefer not to actually, I prefer not to discuss the policy itself, just the fact that the reasoning behind why they want to take it off, like at this point.
I agree with what she said, that it's clear what it states there. Okay, I'll get into the next board comments.
All right, not seeing anybody, I guess we'll get to a vote. We're voting to, go ahead, Jen.
I guess my question is, did we not vote this once before? Did we not pull this, did we not, did you not request to have this pulled out before and we voted on that not to pull it out? Or am I not remembering correctly?
So I did request it and it was, you are correct, it was voted that way. But it's clear, it's very clear from policy, which I did not bring up at the time. And from that last paragraph at the bottom, it clearly states, "Items may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any board member," which I am.
So, so the board did, this board did vote on this, correct?
This board violated policy, I might think, when they did that.
You're, you're also interpreting that this is a controversial topic, which I disagree with your
According to Webster's Dictionary, this is a controversial topic.
Mrs. Hogan, it's controversial to you and a couple of people. It's, so it doesn't make it controversial to the community. Are we controversial to the community? Are we controversial to you?
Mr. Brophy, I am not asking that the policy, I'm asking that it be removed from the consent agenda because it is controversial to this board. There are three members of this board. I don't remember the exact vote, but I know there are three members, okay, thank you. I know there are three members of this, this board who find it controversial. Therefore, it is controversial. It is not
So, so every time we don't have a 9-0 vote, it's controversial?
No, Mr. Brophy.
For just saying.
You can move it down, you can move it down into the itemized agenda. I'm asking for it to be removed so that I can vote yes.
Call for a vote, please.
Call for a vote.
Mr. Zawada, this would be the vote to remove 006 and 903 from the consent agenda.
No.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
No.
Mr. Hemingway?
No.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
No.
Mr. Brophy?
No.
Motion fails four, five.
So I believe there is a motion on the floor to approve the consent agenda. To approve the consent agenda as presented. I believe that Mr. Hemingway made a motion. I'm not sure if there was a second. It was not, okay.
Okay, I made a motion, Mr. Zawada. Seconds, we'll go to a vote, please.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
No.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
No.
Ms. Nyman?
No.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion carries six, three.
Next, on the superintendent's itemized agenda, we are not going to move forward with taking a vote on the first reading of Policy 707. We will remove this from the agenda. Mr. Sultanic, do we need to take an official vote to remove, um, first reading of Policy 707 since we are going to be moving this or to vote to table it?
Well, is there a motion to table it? Or is there a voluntary motion just to withdraw from the agenda?
Can I?
Voluntary.
Voluntary. It, it, I think we, for the most part, there
Okay, so administratively, you're just going to take that off the table for action this evening and you're going to be slating it for action at a special meeting as you stated. Is that correct?
That is correct.
So you do not need a motion tonight?
Okay. All right. So moving on to, um, the other, the next, um, on the itemized agenda is the 22, 23 Boyertown Area School District Emergency Instructional Time Template. For that, I am looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the 22, 23 Boyertown Emergency Instructional Time Template as presented.
Zawada motions.
Mr. Zawada made a motion. Mr. Updegrove seconded. Any questions, comments?
I just have a question. I'm, I'm looking at the, um, I just want to make sure I'm looking at the right thing. Yeah, I'm looking at the Emergency Instructional Time Template. And at the bottom, it says motion and voting. Is that supposed to be there? It's about the, it's about the consent agenda.
It, it, it really, it's, it's talking, I'm not sure why that's there. That must be to view
That will be corrected within board docs. Right now, it has the itemized tagged as consent items. So Mrs. Kramer will need to correct that to change it back to itemized, but there will be an individual vote on the itemized.
Okay, that's all I wanted to say. Thank you. I appreciate it.
Any questions with regard to the motion on the floor? Mr. Stout is here to answer any questions with regards to the emergency instructional time. It's the flexible instructional days that we have been putting into the Department of Education for. We've been approved to receive them. We're bringing it to you to make sure that you're okay. It gives us flexibility around those inclement weather days, especially if we've had more than three and we've already closed school that we don't have to add days at the end of the school year, or we don't have to take away days through the holidays that, you know, are listed in the wintertime. So, go ahead, Mr. Stout.
But again, not limited to just weather.
No, not just limited to weather.
Let me just clarify a little bit about that. It does give us the opportunity, if we have to pivot in a particular area, to not meet the 180, 180 day requirement. If it would be something pandemic related that would impact one class, a building. So it does give us more flexibility beyond our flexible instructional days. So we submitted the same application last year. This is a standard application that the state has provided for us to have the flexibility beyond those flexible instructional days if it really only impacts a, a small group of, of students or a building.
How many days are we allowed under this?
It really doesn't, the flexible instructional day application that Mrs. Torscha made reference to allows us the opportunity for up to five days. That was a separate application process that was done two years ago. That's a three year, so we're in our third year of that, that we can use flexible instructional days prior to using a, a snow day. So we don't have to go further into the summer. This application itself, all it does is waive the opportunity or the requirement of us completing 180 days, 900 hours at the elementary school or 990 hours at the secondary environment. It really doesn't stipulate how many you're able to use in the application. You have that copy in, in your, in your packet that you were given last week. It doesn't tell you the maximum amount that you can use.
Good question, Ms. Nyman. I said, good question. We want students in school in person. 100%.
Any other further questions, comments? So we're looking for a motion to, except the, approve the, the emergency instructional time template.
Hogan motions.
I'll second. So that's a first from Ms. Hogan, a second from Mr. Hemingway, myself. We'll go to a a vote. If there aren't any other further questions or comments, all right, let's go right to a vote.
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
And lastly, I will be looking for the Board of School Directors to approve the personnel agenda as presented.
Hogan motions.
Okay, I had a, a, a motion from Ms. Hogan, Mr. Panarello with a second. Any discussion? Right to a vote?
Mr. Zawada?
Yes.
Mrs. Scott?
Yes.
Ms. Duroff?
Yes.
Mr. Hemingway?
Yes.
Mrs. Hogan?
Yes.
Ms. Nyman?
Yes.
Mr. Panarello?
Yes.
Mr. Updegrove?
Yes.
Mr. Brophy?
Yes.
Motion carries.
That completes my report. Mr. Hemingway.
Okay, let's take a second just to check in with our liaisons. BCIU?
I'm sorry. That's me. So we will, we, the BCIU did not have a meeting in July, but we will have one next Thursday. And I will, of course, you know, send out the materials and everything after the meeting. So looking forward to getting back into the, um, the IU. So thank you. That's all for me.
Same with BCTC. We're going to get rolling again here pretty soon. School year is approaching. Education and Student Services?
We've had, we've had no meetings.
Ms. Duroff, anything to mention on facilities?
No, I'm anxious for the next meeting. See what trouble I can get into there. Thank you.
Mr. Brophy, any findings?
Nothing at this time.
Okay, and we've, we've exhausted policy. So we've already, what did I say? Destructive policy? So we're done on that. Okay, let's move to, uh, board comments. I guess what we'll do is we'll just work our way this way, work our way that way, and then finish with myself. So Ms. Scott?
I'm gonna go.
So you want to mess up my order?
I'm messing up your order, yes.
Okay. Uh, Ms. Hogan, would you be ready for a comment or would you?
Oops, sorry. I apologize. Yeah, so I'm, I'm concerned about the transparency of this board. In an email that was dated 7/6, it was stated that all board members were provided with all pertinent information needed to vote on the budget. And I objected to that because I had asked for information that was not provided to me. There was other things in those emails that I found concerning. But no matter how many times I've asked for, for clarification, I don't feel that it's been given properly. I reviewed, um, the, I was told that the decisions to have administrative work completed is made by administration, which that is true up to if it, if it exceeds an hour according to Policy 003. The requests that I had do not, did not exceed an hour. And then I went to school code and I looked up Act 14 of the PA General Assembly, which was, was pretty clear that it's the board and the Board of School Directors who are supposed to adopt and, and basically drive the budget. It says, um, they prepare the proposed budget. I could not prepare the proposed budget or be an active member of that when I could not get information that I needed. Our job is oversight and I was not able to do my job because my requests were denied and they weren't even denied in such a way that followed board policy. Policy 002, I feel, was, was violated. I feel we just violated Policy 006. So at this point, I feel that this board is, is just, needs to get back to following board policy and procedure because it's there for a reason. And we owe it to the public to be transparent, to be, we, these are public funds and I take my, my position very, very seriously. I don't like calling my colleagues out. It makes me very uncomfortable. And I just, I feel that at this point, my integrity is at stake. And I have to do it because I owe it to the people who I represent. So I am asking this board to get back to following policy, to be transparent and clear with the public about the money that we spend that belongs to them. So I appreciate it. That's all the comment I have for this evening.
Okay, and I'm going because this kind of ties in with that. There was some information that I did not get for the budget too, and we won't, we won't touch on that. But this is my concern and I am not putting blame on a board member here. But it seems that we do not hold committee meetings. The definition of committee is a group of people, not one person. Somewhere along the line, and I don't know when it happened, and I don't need to know. We went to one person on each committee. We never get the information of when a committee meeting is held. We're never, we're never given any, rarely do we get a report when it comes up on the, you know, on the agenda. We don't get any reports from finance, nothing from policy, nothing from curriculum, sometimes facilities. You know, we just do not get those things. We in this nation, the school boards are highlighted every day. You're always hearing about information of school boards not being transparent. We do not let these people out here know when we are having committee meetings. They have a right to be there according to our policy, according to 006, which we all, we passed today. The board president picks the chairperson of these committees and that's what the policy says. But the board authorizes, and they don't pick, I think, I don't know how the picking goes. I don't know if you offer your services on a committee, which committees do you want to be on? And then the board as a whole votes on that. The, the policy's a little vague, to be honest. When I read the policy, it was like, well, it says the board votes on it, but how do you go about signing up for that committee? Okay? So I feel like we come in here and we haven't done the deep dive that committees are supposed to be. There are work sessions to get the information that we need so that when the budget comes up due, we have it. So that when policies come up due, we've gotten public participation. We have been able to collaborate. We have members on different sides of the aisle politically and that, and we can be together collaborating. be together collaborating. I don't want it to be a partisan thing, or not, you know, I want it to be for the kids, what's best for their education, and we can't do it. We come in here, we lack information, we can't make informed decisions, and that's a dangerous place for us to be. There's no accountability. One liaison meets with an administrative person, nobody knows what's going on, there's no minutes that were given, no, nothing's given to the board. And this has been my frustration from the beginning. But I thought, well, wait a minute, maybe it's just you, you better hang in there. But no, I looked at other schools. What are you, what do they do? What do you do here? They have committees. They have an administrative person there if they need them, but there are work sessions. You work together, and then you come back and you report to the board what you found.
Mrs. Scott, all due respect.
Yeah.
Did we not discuss for probably a good 45 minutes policy?
We, we discuss it here.
Committee of the whole is the name of this meeting.
But you have to dig deeper. We don't look at the legislation sometimes. We don't go to PA code and look at it. That's what work sessions are about. I'm not picking on you, Mr. Hemingway.
No, no, no.
This is just the way it's been set up, and I don't get it.
You're putting out that, that Mrs. Torsia and I have meetings. You don't want to know what our meeting consists of, setting the agenda that she says, I'm going to work on a policy, I want to bring this forth. And we discussed it tonight. That's our work session, committee of the whole. If there was, if there was work on finance, we'd be discussing it also. You have this conception that you're having.
You have to dig deeper, Mr. Hemingway. We're not doing that. You come in, you guys set an agenda, but we don't get to sit, we, we do have some discussion here, but it's not enough. Because you're, we don't want to get away, and hey, I'm just going with what is in our, what we have in our policies. And we're not following them. And I'm not blaming anyone here, but I think we need, in moving forward, we need to be setting up committees where we can come together and be a cohesive group, and really work together on things and dig in. So that we know, so that we know that we know that we know that we have the right information. Because sometimes we're not sure. We sit here, at least for me, I sit here and think that, is this right? But I would trust a committee of three or four people to bring in the right information. That's.
So I'm just going to respond back with regards to the structure of committee. Prior to my becoming Assistant Superintendent, which was back in 2017, there was never, I don't want to say never, but their, their committee meetings were really kind of non-existent. And it appeared that each time that, and you can correct me if I'm wrong, Ms. Nyman, because you're, you're sitting here, you've been on the board for a while, and so have you, Ms. Duroff, I believe that they moved to committee of the whole because no one wanted to not be a part of the group. And having these separate committees did not always allow for everyone to be in attendance. And, correct me if I'm wrong, I'm not sure if that's the guidance, but we're not doing much of anything different than what was the past. And I'm not saying that's right or, or wrong.
Okay, what, what happens there is, though, the public doesn't really get to sit with two or three board members and just talk to them. They get to talk, and we're listening, we're listening. But, you know, sometimes you need more. Like, how much does it really cost your group to be here when you come here? How much did it cost you for the year? That kind of thing, that you don't want to get in that back and forth with them during this meeting. But if you have deep dive meetings, you can, you can discuss. And you don't have to have one every month, but you have to make it public. We're supposed to have public committee meetings. It says here, I'll read the policy. Standing committee meetings may be called anytime by a committee chairperson whom the board president will pick, with proper public notice, or when requested to do so by the majority of the members of the committee. Unless it's held as an executive session, standing committee meetings shall be open to the public, other school directors, and the superintendent. And that's what it says, too. When committee meetings work, even if it's only one person, and you're only just going to discuss an agenda, then that means when you bring a policy in, Mrs. Torsia, you do all the crossing out, and you change everything around, and then we discuss it. So, Mr. Hemingway, you just go over the agenda, and you don't really go over the policy itself.
If you also look, we're not chairman, we're liaisons. We're basically, if you have a question, or at least has a question, or Ms. Updegrove has a question on policy, to streamline, so Mrs. Torsia isn't getting bombarded with emails and questions of where can I find this, I may know the answer might be able to help. So then I can streamline those questions, and then refer them to, to Ms. Torsia, or if it's a finance question, Mr. Brophy would funnel that to Ms. Danicola. Same with Mr. Stout, so that they're not, it's a liaison.
I understand.
It's not a chairman, it's not a, a power seat that you're sitting in making decisions.
Where is liaison in our policies anywhere? It doesn't mention that we have committee liaisons. It says we have a committee chair with committee members. It doesn't say that.
That was under the direction of Ms. Torsia.
I'm just bringing that up, this up here tonight. This really needs to change. We need to be, I mean, I understand, not everybody wants to be out every night of the week, and it wouldn't have to be that way. But if issues arise, like this public participation one has, you know, came up, we have a chance to meet with the public and then report to the board what went on. And so we're not in here forever, and we have accountability, too. There's a, there's a lack of accountability and transparency. Because the public, the people that, whose taxes put the school together, are not able to participate the way they should either. Every other school has committees. Every neighboring school has committees, not one person. But we don't do it that way. So we never dig in, we never get all the information we need because we're not collaborating. And it's, it's, I think we're opening ourselves up for an issue. No, no one member of the board should be responsible for policy. No one member of the board should be responsible to do all the digging for finance. It's not, it's not the why a board comes together. This is a group that we should be working together on things, not separate.
You done?
I'm done.
Mr. Updegrove, comment? Anything?
This is going to be a good one to follow. We have changed our committees since I've been on the board. We've changed it from one to one. And it depends who's sitting up there as superintendent, and who's sitting up there as president. And I think we have gotten a lot more lax. And maybe we need to go back to a better structure so that we can leave some of this and have more of a discussion with the board and with the public input more. But I'll drop that now. I was on the website, our website, after somebody told me about a draft for a special education plan for 2022 to 2025. And I was shocked to see that it was on our website, and that the board didn't know anything about it. Don't we give input into that?
No. We had to put it on the website as part of the responsibility from the Bureau of Special Education, as part of, and I won't probably be able to explain it as well as Mrs. Bartman, who would be able to, you know, bring forward the, the response. But what our responsibility was that it had to be posted for 30 days, I believe, and I'm looking at Mr. Stout, he's probably not 100% sure. And then it had to be submitted to the Bureau, and for them to be able to tell us that they approve it or not, and then we bring it forward to share with the school board. But there, and I'm not remembering exactly what input, if any, it was really about outlining what our requirements are. So, it wasn't for you before it was put on the, the website. That was part of the direction that we were following from the department.
Okay, I'm just concerned because, in essence, we're responsible for this school district. So if there's accountability in there, how are we going to be accountable for the, I haven't had a chance to look at it, because I looked and I saw it's like over 100 pages long.
Well, the accountability would be the responsibility of the administration, and make sure, making sure that we're adhering and following all of the regulations prescribed by the Bureau of Special Education. So the accountability falls on administration, and you, us making sure that we are implementing and fulfilling our requirements per students' individual education plans. That's not a responsibility of the board.
Okay. So are we going to get a presentation of that at some point, though?
We are waiting for the, we got responses back as far as what we need to fix. We are in the process of fixing and resubmitting. And once the approval has come from the Bureau of Special Education, we can present to the board the special education plan that has been approved by the Bureau. We did double-check with them to make sure, because we felt that it was also backward, that we weren't asking, seeking, you know, approval and presenting it to the board in advance. And their response was, it comes to us, and then you may present. So they're, they're saying, you know, more or less that, yes, you're complying with what our regulations are.
Okay, well, I need a rainy day so I can sit down and read it, which, we need a rainy day anyway. And I know somebody had sent me something, and I forgot what I did with it. But there was another app that I heard is out there that I need to get with you and find out if we use it or not. But I have to find what I did with the information.
No, we're going to move right along. I just wanted to make sure that you're done. Ms. Duroff, can I check in with you before I forget about you up there? Any comments?
No, we never had three or four people on a committee before. And if you do, you'll be there all day, all night, trying to discuss one topic, number one. Number two, when I tried having meetings during the day, that was a horrible, horrible thing for me to do. It was totally uncalled for, which, I don't know, we all have liaisons for different committees. So I guess what the board is asking is that all the administration work nights, too. Because if you're there for two board meetings, and then how many committee meetings, and having them every month, what does that tell you? Some people need to do some serious thought on this process. Thank you.
Mr. Zawada?
Enough has been said tonight. I'm done.
Tony? I, I don't have a comment, so I'm just going to leave with our president. No comment? That leads us to announcements.
Upcoming meetings, again, August 23rd is our Board of School Directors' voting meeting. It'll be held here at Boyertown Education Center. September 13th, Committee of the Whole meeting will be at 7 o'clock at Gilbertsville Elementary School. And then following September 27th, Board of School Directors' meeting. Just to recap some other things that are coming up, our teacher, new teacher induction was held yesterday. So we welcomed our new teachers to Boyertown yesterday, and they're involved in, in different activities throughout the week. Next Wednesday will be our first teacher day, Wednesday the 17th of August. Our teachers will be back in the building and getting ready to start for our opening of the school year, which will be, the first school day is August 22nd. So sadly, it seems like we end summers anonymously with the start of school year, but really, we have about another month of summer yet. So enjoy these hot, humid, muggy days. That is all that I have, Mr. Hemingway.
Chris, we make a motion to adjourn. Thank you.
Meeting adjourned.